It is four oh two P M. This is Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty five. This is the Blufftown Council Regular Meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Brad Hornsby.
Julian Hook.
Jennifer Davila.
Anne Letman.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
So the first item is approval of the Blufftown Council Regular Meeting Minutes from January seventh, two thousand twenty five. Has everybody read them? Are there any changes? Any modifications?
Motion to approve Blufftown Council Regular Meeting Minutes, January seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then approval of Blufftown Council Work Session Minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. Same question as everybody received them. Have you read them and are there any changes or modifications?
Motion to approve Blufftown Council Work Session Minutes from January fourteen, twenty twenty five.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Then approval of Blufftown Council and Planning and Zoning's Joint Meeting with Legal Counsel on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. Are there any changes, modifications?
I just noticed that Amanda was posted as being here, but she had an excused absence.
Motion to approve Blufftown Council Planning and Zoning Joint Meeting with Legal Counsel on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, with the answer.
Second.
Any other changes? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Those are unanimous. Then the last is the approval of the Blufftown Council Regular Meeting Minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five. Are there any changes, modifications?
The only one I'd say is in other where it says that there's a balloon festival and then that we're sending off. We're sending somebody off. I would just say that it needs to be a send off of Dana Joseph Myers, not a balloon.
Motion to approve Blufftown Council Regular Meeting Minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second. Any other questions or additions? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous as well. This is public comment. There will be a three minute time limit for anyone wishing to make the public comment. If you exceed the three minute time limit, the meeting controller will mute you. And raise your hand if you're in the audience. Raise a hand icon and put your name in the chat box if you're online. We have two people in the audience. Neither of them have a hand raised. And one online.
I don't have anyone who's indicated they want to make the public comment online.
Then we'll go ahead and close it off if no one has. Put their hand up. It's four oh six. And we'll move into the unfinished business. Discussion and vote on the Class C road dispersment submittal. It goes to the Utah, UDOT Department of Transportation. And the discussion of the request to add appendage A on road standards to the subdivision ordinance. I don't have my computer before me. Do we have Michael Havith on that?
Yeah, hi everyone.
Hi, Michael. Um. I received the UDOT's middle form that was redone by Brad Bumper and yourself. Michael, are you comfortable with the changes that were made?
Uh, yeah, I mean, um, you know, Brad and I went over them a few times and, uh, you know, we added Willow to the dirt roads because, uh, you never know in the future it's there, you know? And, uh, made some corrections. The, uh, the previous submittal, the totals were essentially correct, but he had left out streets accidentally. So those were put in. And, uh, for example, um, Transfer Station Road and Sand Island Road. It was, they were included in the total, but they weren't included in the list. And that was about it. I mean, I, I recommend, you know, that, that the town approved this submittal and we send it on to UDOT.
Has everybody had a chance to take a look at it? Anybody? I looked at it. I think it's fine to sign off and approve. Other people?
It looked good to me. On the number seven on gravel, fourth west, south of Larkspur. He corrected that one. That was one that we discussed at the last meeting. Taking the private property off of the buffer. So he corrected that. The one, um, six south of Larkspur was not removed. Sending mail asking, did you, did you ask him about that one, Michael?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the, you know, the road system. I don't, I don't know what else to say about that, you know?
Did you ask, did you ask Brad to, to look it up? Was any of the ownership looked up on that one? And then by the way.
You know, when we did the first go around, he checked every street in town. And, uh, uh, that's how we found out about Billy Gaines, uh, you know, Nielsen Road, we lost a half a mile. Third West, you know, they never took that off when they, when they dropped off that piece above the gate. And, uh, you know, so, uh, I don't know what else to say about that. But it's, it's been, it's been on the road. The county turned it over to us in twenty eighteen like that. I've seen, uh, nothing's come to the town that says otherwise. There's no, nothing that shows it's ever been vacated. So, I mean, that's the way, that's the way it is, I guess.
How did you remove cottonwood wash north of the gate?
Pardon me? Say it again?
How did you go about removing? You took a half a mile off of our reports.
Yeah, a half a mile there and a, and a half a mile on Nielsen.
How did you justify those?
Well, so cottonwood wash when that road was vacated by the.
They were vacated.
Yeah, that, those were all vacated.
Yeah, we didn't know about Billy Gaines. I never, I never Musselman, Ben Musselman, never told me it had been vacated. So I didn't know about that. And so that was a new one. And, uh,
Well, the, the plat's real clear and that's why my question was if you asked him this time, if, if he looked at the plat. But this was just from months ago.
So just by way of process, if landowners, and we've been told this by Chris McManus, if landowners challenge ownership of anything that the town is claiming, there's a remedy for that and that is to file claim, asking to clear title. And so I don't feel, from my perspective, that's what landowners need to do. If the town has claimed it and there's no evidence to the contrary, it's been filed and made available and verified, then somebody needs to do something to make their claim and get a court to weigh in. And we've been told that by Chris McManus. Any other changes or?
My, my comment would be, I'm not comfortable until we have proof that it's the towns asking for money or for claiming it or, and it looks especially bad where you're adding surface to a driveway on a private property of a council member. That looks really bad.
And it doesn't, probably the council member should not be involved in the discussion.
But I, I don't think you should be improving council members. So I'm really glad that Sayers' piece came off because he'd have been in the same boat. It looks like we're giving preference to making driveways better for council members. So I'm glad that that's one, that one.
So moving away from six west, south, are there any other pieces that people have questions from, uh, Michael about?
Well, I might just say, as far as the additions, I studied, you know, I'm very familiar with all of it. And that's part of my job on the road department and I, you know, I know the maps inside out. But he did add the lower button wash onto this list, uh, which is, there's two segments because the county has a little stretch in between. And so they, when they grade it, they do both the top and the lower. It's, it's the lower, but still north of the highway. And then Willow is not on our list and that is added between fifth and eighth was a dirt road. So you'll see that there. And like I said, he added the, the old dump road, transfer station, didn't change the name. So you'll still see like Cow Canyon Road is what we call Bluff bench road. But those additions didn't transfer to the chart. But then the other question was Facilia, if you had asked about Facilia, because that had come up in our discussion too, as to whether that's town road. And if that's one that we can claim.
You know, with regards to that, I mean, if, if someone provides some kind of, uh, you know, legal record to the town that that's a, a public road, uh, I've never seen anything. Uh, nothing's come up, uh, in a, you know, in the survey that Brad did. If somebody presents that to the town, uh, where we're at now with this map, it's very easy to, to revise it, you know? I started working on this in October. Put a lot of volunteer hours into it. And so now we're at a point where if, if changes need to be made, it'll be easy to make them. But right now, uh, nobody's presented me, the town hasn't presented me with any record that that's a public road.
Is this Facilia Road?
Which I've never seen any, I've never seen the county do anything to it beforehand. And always I have the opposite problem with you, Ryan. I don't want to pick at something that's fine and make it up all the best that could be at my neighbor. Because the information I have looks like the road is mine, but there's no, so I just. So I'm finding Facilia to make it on here.
But it, yeah. It's, yeah, we just, that's one that's come up in discussions.
So does anyone want to make a motion to? Have me be able to sign this and prove it or are we not ready to do that?
I mean, I'm comfortable doing it. I mean, it sounds like there's like some rant, I mean, the problem is like, you think it shouldn't be on the list? Well, he, his record shows it should, so it's like opposite Facilia. So then if you're, if you have records or anything like, like Ann saying, to stop the process and pull it off and it's just on the record completely, then it'll be settled forever.
But this is just a UDOT request for sales money. It doesn't have anything to do with illegally.
But he's saying that, but he's saying that we claim it and he has records that it's ours to claim. So until that's resolved, I don't think we should just throw it out either, just because you sound like Dan Bernans said there's a process.
Yeah, I, I would be more comfortable adding it in. It's point zero nine and making it correct since there's a known conflict. Take it off every year until it's sorted and then add it back on. Do you know how much money it is that you're worried about, Michael? Point zero nine miles, what's that convert to with gravel? If we leave it off and add it next year?
Is somebody talking to me?
Yeah, I just said, what's the, the money value that makes the difference here? If it's point zero nine miles, what is that per mile on gravel? Like what, what's the damage done if we remove it and then we put it back on if, if the town claims it?
It's, it's very, very difficult to calculate that, you know? The formula is very complex. You know, you get, uh, you get population. Haze gets the most, gravel the second most, and then dirt the least. So it's very hard to calculate per mile. I wish I could do that. And, uh, but if you take a look at the formula, which I've distributed a number of times over the years, you, you'll see, and sales tax factors in, there's a lot of factors that come in. So it's very hard to say what's, what something's worth and what, per, per mile and what it's not worth. I just want to say that.
So it seems to me that if, if the surveyor has used the same, has been consistent with all of the roads in how he applied the mileage, it doesn't really matter what the money is. It was the application applied across the board. Like, did he verify things, Michael said he has? He's gone back and made a correction on the map that got done. I make a motion that we approve the Class C road dispersment submittal to UDOT and get this signed under way. I second it. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. 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 Anyone opposed?
No.
All right. Four ayes, one opposed. Then I will sign that. And Michael, do I send this back to you or do I send it into Chris Potter?
I'll send it to Chris Potter. And if you wish, the town wishes, put me down as the point of contact, please.
Think that's reasonable? Does anybody want to be the point of contact other than Michael?
We've discussed it. If anything, the manager, somebody should be on all these committee calls, department calls. I think this is, uh, what do you call it? Setting it up for, ahead of time for our water department. That it's not just left to the responsibility of one person listening. So I think like our manager or somebody else from the committee should be on those calls.
I don't know the word talking about calls, just the point of contact.
Well, the point of contact is just one person. Contact, but with the idea that he discusses it with somebody.
Well, if, if we're setting up departments, which we have with the roads department and Michael kind of heads that piece and it has been the contact. I personally don't know enough about roads to want to be the contact. So I would decline being the contact.
No, just if, if he had, uh, asked me to join the call, like we talked about at our last meeting, I could have asked Brad these questions and he could have looked up the ownership and we wouldn't be having this discussion. So anyway, go ahead, carry on.
Okay, so unless I hear somebody volunteering to be the point of contact, I'm going to continue to have Michael be the point of contact. And then we can certainly add points of contact and phone calls through procedural discussion down the road in the location. Number two, hey, thank you, Michael. I hope you're feeling better.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Number two, discussion of classical methods of enforcement of the town's ordinances. So I, I put that on there, not so much to tie up a discussion today, but to, um, kind of get some direction on how you want, how everybody wants to handle talking about enforcement. Now that we've talked with our attorney and with planning and zoning. There was a pretty interesting segment, um, San Juan County Commission meeting today because they have a public hearing on their planning and zoning in the unincorporated areas. I jumped off at public comment number five, or twenty five rather. And they still had people in the audience and they still had people online to comment. But Kendall Laws cited to the nuisance law in Utah code and made some suggestions on how not to do enforcement. And I was thinking, maybe we should do a work session and have a topic on a work session ourselves to talk about what have, you know, what, what's our next step in them planning and zoning? Like what's their next step? Unless people are prepared to discuss it tonight, I would just recommend we put down a work session in February.
I know Linda had sent out a link to just, um, almost like a case study of small town enforcement. And I would definitely recommend folks take a look at it. It's one that I had seen a couple of times. It certainly isn't like a silver bullet to enforcement, but I do think it calls out a lot of the issues that we are already aware of. And I think I would be really interested in the work session about talking about, is this a hired position? It's a contractor position. Is it a position that could be combined into another, another administrative, um, role to pick up some of, um, the workload as we're building out the organization? And so, um, and then, you know, if we do determine it is a town employee role, you know, what is the scope of work that we would be asking of that person? What falls in their, um, what would fall under them? What would still fall under the mayor? What would fall under like the town manager? And have a real good discussion about our expectations for how, um, it all lays out. And then based on that scope of work, then I could figure out like, what's an appropriate salary? Or how much do we think that we can contribute to this particular role? Because if we're asking them to do all of it, then clearly our budget needs to be able to flex to, to do that. Whereas like if the mayor is still taking on specific tasks, um, for certain ordinances, then we can kind of have that discussion and think about how to fill, best fill that position.
Yeah, what immediately came to mind when you were talking about combining enforcement with something is when you look at the addressing aspect, because that really, you have to have the address, you have a building permit, you have a whatever. And right now we have yeah, addressing piece, but it's separate from the building. Yeah, I like the idea of putting it on a work session and trying to come up with a broad picture and then start narrowing it down.
Be awesome on the board of the work session to have some information about contracting and stuff like going that way, like how they apply it, not being in town, like, you know, that can answer some questions. But did you say since something?
Linda, Linda said, sorry. It's just a link to like a case study or case studies of other folks who have gone through this for small municipalities.
The comment that Kendall Laws had made, he made it last week or whatever week that was of a big public hearing, the first one on planning and zoning. But he talked about the nuisance law and how if they were using oh, the dog or the number of dogs, four dogs. So if your neighbor has five dogs, an ordinance has four dogs, why are you paying enforcement officer to go there? When if you're the neighbor, you could proceed under the nuisance law, take them into court and let the court deal with it versus the enforcement officer? Because when you then the follow through would be when you're dealing with dog enforcement, you've got to have the kennel. You've got to have the way to secure them and take care of the end result and then have a justice court. So we should probably take a look at the nuisance law too, and see how that fits into some of these ordinances and whether we want to find change some of the remedies. Our next work session is February eleventh. So should I just add it to that?
Yeah. I think it would also be helpful in the discussion to have a list of each of our ordinances enforcement mechanisms as they're currently written. And perhaps that's something that someone could help compile in a list so we know exactly like what ordinance we're talking about. And then I think it would also be helpful to have a list of like the common issues that we're seeing. Like clearly enforcement is this big wide issue, but if we can start narrowing down, like we're commonly seeing these kinds of issues, then it can help us write a better job description or a better contracting language as to like what we see as the most important things as we start out under enforcement. And I was wondering, since my plate is quite full, if maybe council members maybe want someone could take a stab at each of those lists or one person.
I'll do the whole thing. I'll do that.
Well, who's got other willing tips here, I'm sure?
That, that'll force me to look at a couple of other things. So let me, let me go through them. So the only help I'd like is making a chart, which I'm incompetent of doing. So like on the computer, get me set up so that I've got columns to do the ordinance number, the remedy, reinforcement. And I'm happy to do it, but I'm, I cannot do columns. Sorry. Will you all help with columns? Thank you, William.
I was gonna say, I could do columns, it is word processing guy, not good at it, it's spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And then I would just say, since Anna's taking on that big chunk, if other folks can bring those kind of same ideas to our meeting, we can have a really productive conversation about how to address this beast of a problem.
And I will try to get it out in the next week. So you've got a week to look at it and double check the ordinances yourself if you've got a question. But it will help you refresh my memory where we've had some holes.
And I know that language can be like a little tricky too, as to, I mean, it's definitely the legalese behind it. That's the whole idea is like, it is the arm of enforcement. So I think it'd be helpful for everyone to look it over and make sure that we all understand what that language is and what it means.
Right.
Language in each ordinance you're suggesting.
Yeah, so, yeah. And then like, I think that'll help us too. They're like, we have two wildly different enforcement mechanisms for similar type ordinances. We can figure out if we need to make amendments or, yep, they're both valid, but let's find the person to do it.
But then on this chart, we can't look that way, but if you put a link to each ordinance on that chart, so that.
That could be helpful too.
Yeah, I could as well.
Do that.
I can, I can do that.
We'll get it.
Yeah, well, you could do it, but I don't have to turn around.
Okay, yeah, and I that's something that I can do. All right, then moving to number three, report on the changes to the Environmental Protection Agency. Oh, I have grant, I don't know what I did. On the status of the, the Environmental Protection Agency, we, I think somehow my computer probably did something weird. Anyway, on the government to government grant, been an update on the Cooperative Cultural Center, I did one time and I was fast. But will you want to come up and give us?
Say, come join us.
Ignore the gibberish in number three and just give us an update on what we know.
Yeah, let me read that one again. So I believe that should say, report on the changes to the Environmental Protection Agency Project Director?
And that is just like project, like just what's going on?
Oh, okay. All right, that's how I read it. Yes, I had, I had seen the gibberish. I just, it's an update on that. So we have accepted uncommon architects and they would like to come to town and attend one of our D R C meetings. February sixth, they will attend our design review committee meeting. And so my question for all of you is, how do you want to do this? Do we want to have a meeting with Town of Bluff and U D V and Rural Utah Project Education Fund before we meet with the architects at that design review committee meeting at one? Do you guys want to send your questions to me? But what the architect really wants to hear from us is what are our project goals? What are our hangups? What is, just basically they want to hear from all of us to make sure that they are really creating and designing to what we want.
Well, it feels, so the elephant in the room, it feels like we have a little murky piece here where we have the architect's coming in, Rural Utah project being the pass through, our partners being Utah Genetta Care. So everyone needs to be heard from. So I think that. So I think that from my thinking, I would really like to see us get together and have a discussion about how to maneuver through this. I think that everyone has to be at the table, but do we just want to have like one or two council members? Do we want to have one, you know, Utah Genetta Care, you can have one or two people, like the DRC, Rural Utah, one or two people? Or do we want to say, open it up to everybody and whoever shows up and we just notice that it's a public meeting? I think that can get really chaotic and probably not be productive. But one of the things that I heard when Erin was talking to me about this is about the date that they were coming down. There's kind of an expectation, it sounds like, Malia, that we know what we want in the building and kind of where, and we don't have that plan. So it might be a good idea for the council to meet and try to before the 6th and do just even an hour of like, how do we see this building being used in terms of space? We've got that rough, uh, guide that was done two and a half years ago. But we've never had, we've never been successful at nailing down like, yes, this would be the room that we want for this. In every room, we've got it in the, in a couple of the big rooms. Like our offices would be here in the front and UDB would want this section of the library to this. Or maybe this is where the, uh, daycare center would go. But we haven't talked about all the rooms and we haven't had a consensus on it. And it sounds like we probably need to do that.
And I guess, I mean, I, I am hoping that an architectural firm can also like give us some direction as to like, we hear you need X, Y, and Z. We think it would work really well to put it in this section of the building because it's close to this. I think a lot of us are either very close or very far from the building at this point. Some of us more close than we want to be. But if we can at least have that list of like, these are all the things that we're hoping to accomplish. Here's our general idea of where we thought they might work. Then maybe they can help steer us in the right direction. But I completely agree that we have never sat down and said, here is the list. And I'd love to break it down into like, these are the absolute must haves. We have written into grants that we're going to do X, Y, and Z. Here are the things that we have heard or that we believe as council members, that we believe as a community would be really nice to have. We're not quite sure where they fit right now, but like these were our wish list kind of items. How can we help bring those to fruition? Um, but I'm with Anna, we do not have a list and I would feel very uncomfortable moving into a meeting with the architects with like nothing on the wall, right? Like it is a blank canvas and I know, you know, we need this refinished building and it's going to have new paint and new floors. But I, in my mind, there's nothing concrete as to what's going in as well.
I agree with you. I also don't think that we are going to get a lot of cooperation as to what the, um, UDB portion of the building needs or wants to look like. So I also think that it might be good of us to try to approach uncommon architects and say, we need a base finishing of re, recon, reconstruction of the building to make it a usable space as our base layer. And then we can work on the, the one third of, if that's what we're going on portion. We would like our offices to go here. We would like priesthood to go here. We would like, you know, and just, just some really base things, but I, I, I don't see us getting a lot of cooperation. And I don't think that we should be promising a lot of, UDB, you're going to get this. Because right now we don't have the money in hand to do a lot more than, than I think, than a base refinish of the building.
That's a really good point, Malia. Given you're in close contact with uncommon, could we frame it as, hey, this is our initial thing. You'll come down, you'll take some measurements, you'll actually see the building in person, which is awe inspiring or terrifying.
So out of, out of the two architecture firms, at least.
That's true. Yeah, that's a good point. But, you know, we just need a facelift, that's what we have the money for, that's what we've been saying, we have the money for a facelift. What, and, and just kind of get the sense from them of like, what else is going to be needed for them to like start? And I know it's like a multi-pronged approach or a multi-phase approach. So like, hey, is this enough to just like get you started? Or do you really need the like space by sick face breakdown? And maybe at the same time, we council can, you council can start getting that bullet pointed list. Um, cause like, like I don't want to rush this either, and I don't want the community to think that we're rushing it. I mean, for goodness sake, it's been three plus years, we're not rushing it. But if we can get a list together in a week, two weeks, that would be amazing in my mind. I just don't think it's realistic.
Well, I'm trying to remember their proposal, their design schedule. They had, one, the idea that they would offer several, uh, design meetings, design meeting to us, maybe that they would handle. So there should be opportunity to be similar stuff. Shaking house, but.
Yeah, and their email with me asked, required, saying that they were going to be attending our February 6th meeting. They said they want to meet with all decision makers of the project to discuss project goals, uses, pain points, priorities, et cetera. And so I'm happy to reach out and ask them if we can make this just a first rough draft.
You said painting.
Painting points, yeah.
It'd be a good example.
Yes.
This is our team.
Yep. Uh, so moving on from that, um, our.
Well, I just have a question, um, if we, we have not voted on the two thirds, one third. So what do we do with that? Do we make the whole building and do the two thirds, we generally sort of alluding to? There's a possibility that we do the whole building just to make it livable? Or how does that fit with our agreement? Because I think we need to match it up to our agreement.
Well, I, I think in terms of the, what uncommon's going to do with working with the infrastructure piece, we're, we're pretty, I think we're, we're fine with looking forward to getting their input on all that part of it. I think once something pops up about designs and that type of thing, we've got to drag UDB in if they're not showing up. I mean, we just are going to have to. But I think this has been such a big discussion about what we've got the money to do, it's really infrastructure. But it would be nice, it would be wonderful to get UDBs buying. I think Rural Utah Project's going to be easy to get their buy.
And then a little question that, that I often wonder is what do we do with the common spaces? Again, what do we do with that whole kitchen? What do we do with bathrooms, hallways? Where is there, if you come in, where do the gates close to keep one in, one in or whatever?
Yeah, those are really good questions and, um, so they're coming the 6th and that's a DRC meeting. So maybe while, maybe between now and the 6th, we individually have questions or thoughts on what we could do. Send them to Malia and let DRC meet as usual. And I'll ask Chris to send a letter that spells out, this is the meeting with uncommon architecture. You need to be there at the table to be heard because we're going to have to start talking about use.
How do we make that meeting be productive though? And not just another blow up explosion, waste everybody's time, not get anything accomplished meeting? Cause that's what, I'm afraid that that's what it will turn out to.
I think that's a very real fear.
Yeah. I think they're going to start attacking and coming up with all kinds of unexplainable, unlistened to questions and make it, make it a fiasco and nothing's going to move forward. But then what, what's, what is their seat at the table now that they're not at the table? Other than part of our agreement, they are solid at our seat at the end.
And again, I mean, this all came down to, you know, these are the funds that we have in hand. It really was intended that we're going to get the guts of the building to where it needs to be. I, like, part of me is like, yes, like, let's give uncommon the wish lists. Like here are all of the things. And then they can say like, realistically, we've seen a lot of these, like realistically, this is what you could get out of this based on the funding that you have. But I also, I mean, I have to take the very real, this is our grant and this is our funding and we are putting all this money forward. We've asked for our partners to be at the table. I am a broken record, I'm a broken record on DRC. We've asked them to be at the table. It is past the 11th hour, the 11th hour was six months ago. And so this is our funding. We're ultimately responsible for how we spend this money on this grant for architectural stuff. And so I'm with Jen.
And this is the money that we have to spend. What can we do to this building to get it usable? If, if somebody else has to go for another architecture grant down, down the road to, to figure something out. Well, I, I think that's, I think that's on them. I think we just need to get our bases covered, get that building to a point that we could sell it if we needed to or whatever we need to do and move on from there. I, I don't think we have a lot of money to do a lot more than that anyways, honestly.
And I, I don't disagree with you on that. But I think we have to make sure that the invitation is, is wholeheartedly extended and it's on them to, to show off.
Yeah. But. And how does that work if we assign somebody else? We've already assigned somebody else to do their position. No, we, we, well, we have assigned somebody else to be a pass through partner with us. It doesn't have anything to do with their portion of the building. That's working with the $200,000 that is the pass through from the $1 million of the USDA grant, period. RUP doesn't attend our DRC meetings.
And we wanted to ask about that too, because like in my mind, I see RUP as they are going to be a renter of space, right? But, I mean, there are certain considerations that we might build in closet space or storage or whatever. But it's not going to be like a super massive, you know, they, I don't see them, I mean, they're not an owner of the building. And I don't, but I don't want to, I mean, they've, they've gone extraordinary lengths to make sure that we can keep this grant too.
Right. And the way I see that is if we allocate a classroom, for lack of better words, space at this point to RUP and say, this is your area, you use that money that you've got for your pass through to do design changes and things like that, that you want to do to these rooms. Are they going to be architectural or, you know, building altering? Not very much. I mean, they might add an occasional wall or something here or there, but they're not going to be knocking big walls out or things like that.
They are overseeing the RFP for window replacement. So through their pass through fund, they are working on window replacement.
Of the whole building or just?
Of the ones, the oldest windows, as many as we can get. So there's 12 windows that I walked around the building and said, we're going to need to replace these because they're single pane. So they are, that is like their biggest project is window replacement. So could we select DRC meetings that they're invited to that it pertain to?
Did we end up going to RUP with any of the, um, conference room sound design?
Yes, we also did some of the sound design with RUP.
And art, we had talked about, um, shared space hallway, art displays and things like that with RUP. I think, I think that those are things that we could say, these are things that we've talked about with our pass through partner that we need to have some kind of design concept in on.
Yeah, and they'll be good at giving us quote from engineers and telling us, well, we can't afford it, that'll make us the decision for us.
Yeah, I was going to say, tell us what we can afford with the money that we have. That's, that's what I would like them to do, I think mostly.
Right, and so maybe it is really just as straightforward as having a regular DRC meeting without a whole bunch of other people and getting the initial input. But making it clear through Chris, Matt Canani and Christina Sloan, this is what's happening on the 6th. And Janet, you need two board members there. And then just keep, I mean, we've got to keep moving forward. I.
Yeah, I, I just don't want us to be stalled and, and we don't get anything done for the next three months because we stalled out on this meeting.
No, no, we, we need to move. I don't think there's anyone here who thinks we shouldn't push through. We've got to do it. And, you know, from my view, and I know Chris doesn't like when I say this, that if we get sued, we get sued. But we're not making progress. We've got, we've got money, we've got funds, like Erin said, that we're accountable to. Uh, Erin is doing the first drawdown, you know, we're in this game. So here we go and hopefully they'll come along.
So what is their role in these meetings when they're not on the grant?
They're, they're still.
They're still partial owners of the building. They're owners of the building, but. That's their role.
So that's the agreement still requires us to.
So then we need to figure with them, the two thirds, one third, we need to have some sort of agreement with them. Which part is yours and which part is ours?
We, we haven't heard from board members since that walk out. Like, so it's just nothing. Um, we, Janet hops on, maybe with our minutes hops on, it's like maybe five, 10 minutes, we gargle, broken call, keep never somewhere to actually make space for it. Um, and I asked every single time, please send somebody else, some other people, you never know. So it's just.
They're too busy.
We, it's, it's meeting with her is practically like having a video of a CB radio or something. It is like.
But so this, this posed math that was the two thirds, one third and the shared spaces, is that just, are we going to present it for any sort of vote or just assume that that's it and carry on with that with the architects? Cause they'll need to know which part is whose, I would think.
We'll have to see, I mean, hopefully somebody shows up. I mean, we just, we haven't talked to anyone, so.
I don't know that the architects do need to know that. I think they need to finish up the building to get it to a salable point and then we proceed with the rest of that down the road.
Okay, see, I've seen it a ton. Yeah, I think, I mean, I really would like the entire building to have a cohesive look to it. So it's not, I mean, that's the whole idea of the building is that like it's two entities coming together. And sure, there might be like separate needs and separate spaces, but the flooring, the ceilings, any of the guts of it, like those should be the same throughout. The one thing that is going to be important and probably is going to be the big pain point is how to be metered separately. So sooner than later, yes, we do need to figure out who's who and what's what. And, but maybe uncommon could help us identify, like it's going to be easier if you split it here. Or yeah, we can totally do a separate meter and have it split, but like that is going to come up and how to meter it.
I mean, that's why I was asking about the design meetings, they'll be having to come back and work with us.
Yeah. But like even the windows, you know, that the windows need to go to the building. So we've got eight hundred, they've got 200, so we're totally getting more than their share fixed, their portions anyway.
They're getting more than their share fixed, period. I mean, every single grant that's been written has been from the town, with the exception of the $100,000 that might've come from NDN that we don't even, you know, yeah, that isn't even factored into this. So they're getting, UDB is getting a very fair shake by profiting from our, um, grants. I shouldn't say our, those wonderful grant writers out here. I mean, it, it benefits the whole building and we just have to, I agree, we just have to pull ahead.
Yeah, so I think that, that's clear, you guys. I'm clear on it, but because there's going to be some struggles wanting that to, to be one of the specific things. It's not going to be so beneficial just the building.
So Malia, you've got two more DRCs before the 6th. Can you have this as an agenda item on both of those? And then each of those topics, each of those headings that uncommon has given, let's put some verbiage behind so we're not showing up uncoordinated. And then, um, especially for council members. And have you sent that out to council members yet? That's what they're, yeah, so you were, okay, maybe like just send that out to council and it, council, if you have anything like, hey, this is a major pain point or this is something that keeps me awake every night. Let Malia know, because I agree, like we don't want to overwhelm them on the 6th, but we do want a pretty cohesive, like here's our entire list. Realistically, what can you help us with?
I would be just utterly shocked if it was anybody, if it's anybody shows up on the 6th, like, but.
Yeah, they certainly will, yeah.
And can you, will you take the charge of notifying Chris of getting?
Right, I will. Yeah, I think one thing that we've stressed all the way through this is that what, you know, I mean, because their whole big, their big pain point was that we were not being culturally appropriate or whatever. And we have asked from time and time and time and time again, what is, what is culturally appropriate with basic infrastructure? So I really kind of think that's what we need to, to stick to. And, and one thing that I think could make it have that beautiful look is if we do the, the SIBs or SIDS or whatever they are, the panels on the outside of the building to get rid of that concrete block. It'll soak up the energy. Everybody that we've talked to said that that's not appropriate use for that building material. But we can look at it again or ask the architect, but I think that that would give a whole new, uh, artist pad, whatever, to the outside to make it look like whatever it's going to be now in the future.
So the people in the, uh, Gymno Act who built, has built with the SIDS. So the people in the uh gymno act who built has built with the SIDS, so that when you do that. If you have windows, you've got to build a frame around the window and everything has to be hand cut and fitted. And it's not a, that was commercial use, industrial use was not the intended purpose of that material.
Well, I'd just say ask the architect, because that's been one of the things that's come up is that the architects will have their opinions too. On what they like to work with and what they've seen and what they've done and not just another, you know, one of us.
Yeah, I think that overarching, like, how do we insulate the building cost effectively? And then I do think that there are cultural elements throughout the entire community of like, how should the building look? What colors are we using? What does the exterior look like? How do we not just have concrete blocks inside? Like, I think those are all appropriate questions, but I agree with this whole, like, we've asked UDB to tell us what is important. And they have not been able to do that. So especially for the inside of the building. I know their grounds, we've heard some stuff about how the grounds could be utilized, but for the building itself. Um, but I I agree.
Driving up the street or when you're driving by or whatever to to give it a a face well. Might be able to do it simultaneously with the insulation, but you have to ask the architect.
If we had better partners, this would be fun, Mark. You need the professionals here, like, you know, to help guide us to take nap and stuff.
That's exactly it.
So while we're on kind of the building and the DRC, four and five, I'll back up on three. I figured out what my first sentence was, the um the change between April and getting in the project manager. That's what I wanted you to just touch on. So April, who has been our project manager, has moved on.
Project officer.
Officer, okay, that's where I drew a blank on that word. So just for all of our knowledge, the person that was kind of managing the project with Malia and Aaron. Has just been. They're reassigned and we will be getting somebody new.
But we are going to get to keep Cena, our.
She's a personal.
Financial.
Financial off.
Yeah.
Yeah, officer, what are they called?
She's she's like a specialist um in in the financial realm of things. And so we did attempt to do our first drawdown. I'm not seeing it in our bank account, so Cena, I did shoot and email over to Cena to see.
And April did respond to that, saying that we do need a uh sub award agreement with the Rural Utah Project Education Fund. Which Lanice has put a beautiful draft together, awesome, that I'm hoping that you guys will be able to approve next week. Do you guys meet next week? I don't know.
There's not a planned week next week.
Okay.
Stay tuned. So number four is a report on the meeting in January.
If we uh if we need that to get a drawdown, we should probably do an emergency, whatever. They're going to shake their pictures at us again, but we're still not taking any money out.
Okay, so. How close to having the agreement done is Lanice?
She sent me a draft. I forwarded it over to Aaron right before this meeting began. And it looks very good to me. I think it'll be wise to have Chris take a look at it and then also to just compare it to our UDB agreement. I think.
Chris is in a jury trial.
Okay.
And getting any attention from our attorney right now may be slim next to none. I'd say when I reach out to him about the letter to Christina Sloan, I will ask him if he has one minute to talk to me. And see if we can shoot it over to him.
And we just really need to make sure, like, there are elements that the EPA requires. I don't know if that's what she was working off of. But we can compare whether it has those elements and then we can compare whether it has like, how how the requests are made. And like all of the day to day tactical, technical stuff. Uh, because that's really what we're spelling out is like, how do we work together? How do we ask for, how do they ask for funding? What are their obligations? What are their reporting stuff? So I think a lot of it we can do in house. But so I wouldn't say like it'll get done this week, but if we had to have a meeting next week, just a quick yay, looks good.
I'll work on it as well.
Well, sticking with that, how does everybody look on Tuesday or next week?
I'm here.
Yeah, I think I pretty much always take Tuesdays out of the case.
I think so. There's a slight chance of being on a jury, but I shouldn't decline.
Told you how to get out of it. Lou, are you good with Tuesday?
Should be. I mean, it should be fair. We can do it virtually, I assume.
Okay, so.
Thanks, Malia.
Appreciate you.
Welcome. I have a couple more things to report on the project. Our quality assurance project plan is that the RFP is issued, it's out there. I've sent copies of it to approximately fifty something different firms and we are going to hear back. We, I believe our timeframe is March, or February eleventh is the last day to ask questions, closes February twenty eighth, then we'll open it up. At next DRC, the first one in March, so.
Yay.
And I think that's everything.
And so the DRC meeting from January sixteen.
Yep. Um, we already touched on most of what we talked about. We talked about the Q two, Q four outstanding bills. Again, um Janet said that they were having a board meeting.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
She also said that they were waiting to hear from Chris about why they had to pay those, so.
Yeah, we're going to update Chris on the amount.
Yeah, I I think I, I think just to put this on our record, uh Janet Sloman asked why UDB would. Be required to pay utilities for a building that they're not currently occupying. And I give strong props to Malia Collins for answering that in a very tactful way by explaining that utilities. Don't just evaporate when the building's not being used. So it was explained. Um, but that did seem to be their major qualms as to why they were still paying for a building that they can't use. Um, I do believe it was also mentioned that we also weren't using the building and have been held up from doing so for three years. So I'll just, I just want to make sure that's on the the meeting record.
Yeah, Janet also said that everyone's using the. Um, yeah, we talked about the subversive being grant, um, or the substitution. And then we talked about extermination and kind of shipping exterminations.
Extermination.
And to add to uh Aaron's comment. Our attorney talking to their attorney has been over this, they have been provided with the information. Janet Sloman was provided with the information and the same explanation was given to her in the meeting that Malia and I had with her that same week, I believe. So um, nothing new for that, for UDB, they know they've got. They have a bill they need to pay it, but I'll try to roll all that over into Chris's scope.
One of our longest meetings that went to the head.
And number five, we covered that discussion of the DRC participant, possible changes. I had put that on to talk about RUP and how this would get handled. I think we've got a game plan there.
And will we see the RFP?
It's up on the website.
This this current one that's due in by the.
Yeah, Malia, just for kick, would you just send that out to everyone?
What we discussed about this RFP is that this is a very specialized um request for. Proposals.
Yeah.
Um, there aren't a lot of people who do asbestos abatement. So it's and it's very specific, yes.
Specific to the EPA's need for like a document, essentially, like they're not even doing the mitigation. They're just saying, this is how you manage the mitigation. So, yeah, a a necessary step.
Thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate that. The ad wasn't available times, or the notice wasn't available times as we agreed to do a year ago, nine months ago. All right, number six, discussion of culvert maintenance and a vote to pay Halderson Property Management.
So I talked to uh Mr. Halderson today. He said that there were three cattle guards that were cleaned out. Um, at mile marker twenty nine, the um cattle guard was cleaned. There isn't really a drainage issue there, so no additional drainage stuff was done. Um, up on the bluff bench road closest to one ninety one, that one was cleaned. And then kind of the drainage by the side was cleared out a little bit as well. And then he also cleaned the air over um on Butler Wash, just kind of across from the airport, that cattle guard. He said that he just cleaned the cattle guard. It would require extra hours to kind of clear up the drainage a little bit. And then he would need some additional um direction as to like how we wanted the drainage cleared. Um, but he did, he did clean those three, which is why we got the bill um for twenty four hundred dollars. Um, but that work was performed. He says, I don't know if anyone was able to verify. I spoke with him today. But he's pretty good about invoicing it, so that work gets done.
Yeah, I went, I went and looked.
Cool.
And uh, I think we're all, but they will, we do need, I I wish Michael was still on. Because until we get the grader to do some different kind of grading from the county, we need to just keep this in our budget for um every two years. Uh, because it will still flood down in and fill out the sand as soon as it rains. But um, but they're cleaned out really great.
Still great?
Yes, a very good cow. So, but yeah, they are, they are done and I assume they were when he sent the bill, but.
Yeah.
In that connection, I asked him to do it, but I never heard back.
I I just, I just brought that up last time because I know we've been trying to verify that. What was completed in a manner that we were happy with before we just paid bills.
Exactly, especially with the roads over. And this is um out of the roads funds, right?
Yes, and I'll send, it's a good point, I'll send a check as opposed to doing it on the credit card, so it's easy to distinguish between the two. Thanks, Linda.
Motion to pay Halderson Property Management or Culvert.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Number seven, I put on discussion and vote to hire pathways to work on succession planning. As in addition to the town's strategic plan, but I'm going to pull that and put that on the work session. Because Aaron pointed out some other information about succession planning that I think we should have as a package to talk about. Not just pathways, but some other possible options. So I will put that on the work session if everyone's okay with that.
Have they already done the follow up meetings that were part of our?
Right, that one coming up.
Is it, has it already been prepaid or sort of?
For the plan, for the, I think those are including that, I think we have one more left on our package.
It's a good question.
And we're billing this before the meeting.
Before the meetings?
Yeah.
Got it, so maybe, okay. Good one to look at the contract. Yeah, okay.
Uh, Linda, update on short term rentals and business licenses.
So I have, I've sent out all of the renewal forms and renewal reminders. And right now, all of the short term rentals are complete. So everyone has their, sets their um their new license. And we're pretty close with the business license. So everyone is, all our business people, the short term rental people are doing great. And um I sent out a blast a few days ago and have gotten discarded as a reminder. And so we've gotten um a bunch of people.
So just out of curiosity, how many uh licensed short term rentals do we have?
There are uh twenty three. Um, a lot of them are inactive.
Right, right.
And so um, a few of them have more than one rental.
Yeah, I was just curious as to, you know, I mean, because we've been talking about with the housing study and things like that. You know, I mean, that that's that's something that they look at. So I was just curious to num- a number that we had in our head, so twenty three, four.
Has anyone dropped their licensure or has everyone kept it since?
And some of those people have, in the interim, you know, rent them out. Um, the way you'd run monthly.
Right, so. Yeah, yeah. No, no, I, I was just, I was just wondering a number. So like if somebody wanted to know a percentage of, you know, percentage of this, of that. I mean, I'm not worried about tax collection or anything else. I just wanted to know the number of short term rental licenses that we have.
Any other questions I may ask? All right, then, a report on the January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, San Juan County Economic Development.
So a large part of that meeting was about um the new grant that we are doing for businesses. The twenty twenty five San Juan County Rural Grant Program, which we've done every year for the past several years. So it is, so the applications are um being finalized for people. It submission will start February third and and March seventh. Um, we're doing two, three tiers. The top tier is one or two businesses will be able to apply for a large chunk of money, like fifty thousand. Um, the second tier is up, goes up to twenty six thousand. And then the third tier is up to ten thousand, and that one can be more. Because someone just needs a piece of equipment or seed money to start something. Um, so we're trying this to see if we can get more money out to businesses. Um, there is a twenty percent match. It can be cash or in kind. Frequently, it's in kind. And so when that application is ready, I'll let, I'll do it last. And probably the county will, and you probably will too, um, Jen.
I appreciate you sending that out. Um, I was, I was going to ask, the only missing piece that I found there was, was where do we apply for that? And because last year, last year, the application was significantly more detailed than it has been in the previous years. So businesses will want to be gathering that information so that they can turn it in on a time when there was a lot more detail required last time than there has been in the past.
What's the total, total bulk amount that they're awarding?
I think it's a hundred and eighty thousand this year.
Kind of in line with what I think.
Thanks.
And so we're also working on, the staff is also working on several other grants. Um, they're worked on revitalizing Tinder Promers. And we are going to have another business summit based camp April twenty eighth.
Any other questions? All right, then, number ten, discussion and approval of a new desktop computer for town offices.
Right, uh, so we have some dinosaur computers um in our town offices. Uh, the one is a pretty critical piece of equipment. And what I'm proposing is that we replace the one that we inherited from BSA and transfer um some of our accounting software over to it. So it's not a strict replacement of the one that is currently in office number three. Um, but a key function of that will move to this new device. And I am requesting this because it is becoming increasingly difficult for us to handle our accounting system. And so we really need this new device. Um, the quotation was in the agenda packet. Uh, I think it's like fifteen hundred plus two hundred dollars in um initial setup. Uh, so yeah, fifteen hundred, so seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars. Um, we do, based on our um agreement with Galaxy, they do source it all for us. So like, that's the foot we get. They're the ones who set it all up. Um, it would be a Dell device. Um, and that's kind of what they recommend for their, for their stuff. Um, the, I did ask about like the lifespan of these devices. And they did say it's usually like three to five years. Um, that's kind of a hard pill to swallow for me. I wish things lasted a little bit longer. But it is just kind of the way it is. Um, and I hate admitting that, but.
Oh, that's a good question.
We do have spare monitors, um, but I will verify that. Um, something tells me it's just a computer.
The monitors are.
Yeah.
And it's not one of.
Depends on like, well, for our applications, they don't, you know, we don't need, we don't need a game calling monitors.
I, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, that's a good question. I do think we have a backup one, just in case. And then just an update for council too, the other device that you've approved to replace a Brits computer right there, um, they are getting it all put together. It should be shipped here in the next couple of weeks. So which is good because then you have the extra laptop to.
Drop a door open or something.
No, to use for a note taker or something.
And they, they do log on, you know, meetings, it gives you an extra screen for reading and anything. And I, I mean, it looks like it's ready. Is it not working?
Uh, it just uh, it's very, very slow, very, very laggy and battery dies constantly.
Yeah. Um, I would say that the desktop device would also, I'd want them to set it up like for different users. So um Cathy could come in and use it and a council member could come in and like get on and look at Horace and stuff like that.
Will that be an update for you to use too?
No, I really, the main, the main reason I was supposed to pull this moves over to a a newer machine and I don't have to run into Linda's office and restart the computer three times a day. Yeah. Kind of a necessary in, to be completely frank, we have spent a lot of our, a lot on IT this year. Um, but this is one that in their assessment of all of the devices, they, they, both of those are kind of dinosaurs that we need to need to replace. But I think if we just replace one, kind of move functions over, it will be in much better shape.
Yeah, because I think the rest of us just use it to get on to meetings and to get on to iCloud and to get on to Gmail and Google meets and so on. So it doesn't take a lot of.
No, I, these devices will look at replacing in the future, but this one, especially with it housing our accounting system, just needs to be a little newer.
So I guess I can make a motion to approve the expense to do the Dell desktop computer for the office.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous. So under other, I have a couple quick things which will be so nice since we now have to have a meeting on the 28th. I'll just put point in time. The sense of stuff that we have to do, we have to do it on the 30th and 31st of January. And so I'm looking for volunteers. I'll put all the, have that sent out in the packet. So we can talk about how it gets done and who's going to be doing it. So I won't spend any time on it now. Just go ahead and book up your 30th and 31st. So I'm the only person that has to go out.
The 30th is our next um strategy meeting with um the WW. So that would be.
I'll be available. I'll be there. We can jump in the car. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that we're really narrowing the field here.
No, that's okay. But I'll put it on so that I can show everybody the forms and we can figure.
Do we have to do it on the 30th? Because, because I would, I I would volunteer to do that if we could do it like earlier than the 30th or?
So that's a good question. Once again, the instructions came out saying the 30th and the 31st. And with the exception of the first year, I follow up and ask and choose like four days you can actually do it and actually starts the 30th and we'll run into February, but I haven't had time to give the coordinator a call. But San Juan County feels like it's one night from midnight to morning. And that, after having done that, count midnight to morning, it didn't make sense to me. And so, you know, it's actually like a four day span and it can be done at any point, you know, that doesn't, you can do it over the whole four days. So I'll get those dates, but having spent eight hours in cold driving around in the dark, it didn't make sense to me that there had to be a better way. Um, and then just a note on a fire department, um, noticed that Chief Law answered last time with all the kind of, it's fire, a good time to clean up for fire season. We should, if we haven't done a blast, I mean, that might be a good one and to put it on the website, reminding everybody that these are the things you should be doing in this time of the year. Do you have that? Can you? That would be good. Anybody else have another?
I have another. We had a grateful in festival despite the wind on Saturday. I just, business owners of love wants to thank the town glove for the donation of the building use. Um, I think it was a successful weekend for the businesses that were open. I'm looking at the other business person. You know, I mean, I mean, our goal in doing this is to bring, support some um much needed tourism traffic during the off season. Um, and I hope that we were successful in that and that the other business owners would agree with that. So thank you, Town of Love, for the donation and thank you for everybody for participating in the festival.
Thanks. Yeah, it was, I was just there on Sunday, but it was great.
Yeah, Valley of the Gods, I think was, was, well, we had a really great day flying on Friday as well, but the Valley of the Gods was absolutely beautiful this year. And that can be tricky often. So yeah.
Yeah, we weren't up very long, but um, that's fine with me because if somebody says they really think we should pull the plug, I'm ready to, I don't want to be falling out of a basket.
Well, and and honestly, being one, I I did not go up this year, but I drove through and for being one of the last balloons that got picked up because I got put in bottleneck. Um, it was time to come down when people came down. So it was, it was good.
Well, thank you to the business owners. Thank you. So any, if there's no other, other you need a motion, if folks want to go into a successive session, and then we will be adjourning after that and not coming back.
Motion to move into executive session to discuss the ongoing litigation. We will adjourn from that meeting and not go back.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. So we'll turn off this recorder and then we will go into executive session.